Member Beanes?
Here.
Chairperson Landris is absent. Members to Smit Dean?
Here.
And Vice Chairperson Wanika?
Yep.
Thank you.
We have a call. And so we will, we will proceed. And at this point, I, I would like to ask the Planning Commission members to make a declaration of any conflict of interest or any expertise or outside communication that might influence their ability to hear all sides on any item on the agenda so they might come to a fair decision. Hearing none, we will continue tonight. It's an opportunity for our public hearing and we will open the floor up for any public comments and persons who wish to address the Planning Commission regarding items not on the agenda may come forward. Speakers will be limited to three minutes. Any presentation is for information purposes only. No action will be taken. We will open the floor for any public comments.
I have one.
Please step forward. Identify your name, give your address and let's.
I am Earlene Hicks and I live at 1125 North Underwood Street, Ottawa, Kansas. And my concern is, I think it's great that we're going to have a new development there in the area, but has Lincoln School been looked into and the parents using Grant Street as a parking lot on school activities?
And so, so may I ask you a question?
Yes.
Are you addressing something that's on the agenda?
I didn't see this on the agenda.
Okay. So which addition are you referring to?
So I am addressing Grant Street. Is it going to be accommodated for the new housing development and Lincoln Schools activities with the parents in that?
Okay.
It's a one, it's just a one and a half lane street as it is right now.
Okay. We are recording and so your question has been noted.
Thank you.
And we forward it to the city. Thank you so much. Any other comment? Anyone online? Any comments? Well, we will close this particular section of public comments and this point, let's look at our consent agenda, which is to discuss any changes needed to the January 27th starting session minutes. I hope the commissioners have had a chance to look at those. And if you have, I'll entertain a motion to accept or to amend.
I motion to accept.
We have a motion.
Second.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on those? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Same sign. Motion passes. Please go ahead and make their. So at this point, we'll open up for the, for our public hearing and which is to hold a public hearing to consider a preliminary plat for Costco addition, creating 12 residential lots generally located at 1027 East Grant Street. And also to make a motion to accept the staff findings as their own or create their own findings and make a motion to approve or disapprove the preliminary plat. Before we open for public comments, I would like to remind those that are present that our actions here tonight are limited in two ways. One, we do not have our city planner who has been taken ill to make the presentation. So we will ask the applicant to make, to make the presentation. And then secondly, our discussions are to be limited to the city, to the findings by, that have been presented by the city. And if you do not have those, we can, we can furnish you with those. But our discussion and our recommendation will be purely based on the findings. At this point, we will open for public hearing. We may or may not be able to close the public hearing depending on how the discussion goes tonight in view of the fact that our city planner is not here. I will let the city, the planning commissioners decide that. If we do decide to keep the public hearing open, then we will assign another date where the public hearing will continue and then at which point we will then close and make a decision. That may be one thing, that may be one outcome of tonight's discussion. However, I will leave that up to my fellow commissioners to discuss. This point, we will open the floor for, and to hear from our applicant.
So yeah, 1027 East Grant.
Would you identify yourself?
My name is Joe Costco. I'm, own this piece of land and moved into the house. But yeah, it's a little house on 7.12 acres, looking at subdividing into 12 new lots, all single family. Six lots face Milner Street. They're roughly .18 acres. Lot six is a corner lot that might change briefly, just to meet city requirements. But those are intended to sell to Slade Van de Venner with Van Knight Homes. And I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with what he builds, but they're basically three bed, two bath, two car garage, about 1300 to 1400 square feet. So really good slab homes. And then there's going to be four almost one acre lots. Those will just be up for sale if people are interested in building. And then Lot 12, I, I have plans for a four unit townhouse. And I'm not sure if you guys received copies of that. I filled out a separate application for potentially rezoning that lot. That'll come at a later stage, but I do have the plans available if you wanted to take a look. Those townhouses will be three bed, two bath, two car garage, about 1300 square feet. They will have the proper burn wall in between them so they could be sold separately at a later date or split up individually. They'll all be on their own utilities. And I'm looking to move into that once it's built. But like I said, that'll come later on. Do you guys have any questions?
No. Thank you.
Okay.
But the public might have questions and I might have to call upon you to answer certain questions.
Okay, definitely.
We will go ahead and open the floor for public comments and any who are here who would like to speak to this project.
Hello, Paul Bean, 35 Westwood Circle here in Ottawa. And I'm the director of, executive director of the Franklin County Development Council and just wanted to speak in favor of the Costco addition. Again, as I've been in front of this group before, housing is a huge need for our community and this is a great opportunity to start to address some of that or continue to address some of that. Slade, who he mentions built some beautiful homes and done a great job. And I know that would be another great addition from, from Slade, Slade's efforts. So just wanted to stand up and speak in front of you all and support this, this project. So thank you for that time. Thank you.
Anyone else? Online? We don't have anyone in the chat column asking or to speak or anything?
This is Diana. I just have a quick question. Of the two letters that we received, are those typically read at our meetings or do we just consume them?
Yeah. So would you read those?
Those are typically read.
Yeah. Yes. And they'll be read as part of the public comments. Yes.
Sorry, I don't have the microphones. I'm going to speak as loud as I can. This was dated on March 7th of 2022 to the City Planning Commission.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Because of the people who are on line, if you wouldn't mind.
Mind.
Thank you.
Is that, that better hopefully?
Yes.
Dated March 7th of 2022, the City Planning Commission, we respectfully wanted to write a letter to share some of our concerns regarding the distribution of proposed added homes to the preliminary plat for Costco addition, creating 12 residential lots located at 1027 East Grant Street. If homes are to be built as platted out, there will be significant increase to the current traffic congestion and patterns that would impact the immediate area of both Milner and Grant Streets as well as the Lincoln Elementary School. Currently, vehicles begin lining up on Milner Street and Grant Street around 2:00 PM each day until about 3:45 PM. Parents are picking up their children at this time and these areas become very congested and difficult to navigate. People use our driveway as well as our neighbor's driveway, also located on Milner Street, as a turnaround as school is let out each day. Also, the area has traffic from the shift change in the industrial area, which begins at the north end of Milner. We believe six new homes on Milner in the proposed plat would be far too condensed for the area and the traffic issues. One or two homes on Milner would be much more sensible and the other three or four homes would be placed off of Underwood on the east side of the proposed addition, where there is an already developed neighborhood and no issues of traffic congestion, congestion and safety for the children. If additional homes are to be built on Grant Street, we believe Grant Street needs to be improved as Grant Street is composed of chip and seal material and is now particularly considering the two-way traffic and cars parked on either side of the street each day as school is letting out. In addition, there are no sidewalks along Grant Street, making it dangerous for children and pedestrians walking on Grant Street. At times, Grant Street is also used as a throughway for industrial area workers. Lastly, there is currently no sewer line off of Grant Street and this was a large issue for multiple prospective buyers of the 1027 Grant Street property in 2017, as any new building off of Grant Street would require the placement of a sewer line down said Grant Street at, per the City Planning Commission and city ordinances. This is from Johnny and Kelly Douglas, 1040 North Milner Street.
Thank you.
Then we also had one other public comment that was submitted in writing. I'd like to go ahead and read that now as well. To the Planning Commission Public Hearing. As the owner of adjoining property of the proposed Costco addition, this is my response to the proposal. The six lots facing Milner Street transfer to Underwood Street. This will be overcrowding if left on Milner Street. Moving them to Underwood Street will ease school traffic and industrial park traffic. People are parking on Grant and Milner one to one and a half hours before school is dismissed. My driveway is used as a turnaround point to be able to park on the west side of Milner. There is more traffic for soccer. Build is north of school. There is a lot of foot and bike traffic and kids walking to catch the bus for secondary school. I feel six houses in the Milner space would be overcrowding. Sewer on Grant and houses already on Grant have septic system, maybe inadequate. Chip and seal on Grant isn't holding up to the traffic, no sidewalk on Grant. Therefore, I feel having the 2.1 acre lots flip and face Milner, easing traffic congestion would be helpful. This will have a negative effect on lifestyle of residents already living in area. The draw to this area was having a neighborhood and green space in between. I have a very old tree in my yard I would like very much to keep. I fear construction would damage root system, causing it to die. Thank you for the utmost consideration on this proposal. Signed Jean Kamala.
Thank you. Thank you.
I got a question.
You have a question about?
Well, did I miss something? We, the staff has not talked about the project and gone over the project with us. Am I correct?
No. And so that's, that earlier on at the beginning, the staff member who would normally talk about the project was taken ill very last minute.
Oh, gotcha.
And so in honor of those who are present, we said we would hear their, we would hear their concerns and then as commissioners, we can decide to either keep the, the public comments open and then we can make a decision at a later date depending on the, on the comments that we get tonight.
Gotcha. I missed that.
Yeah.
Okay.
This is Diana. Yeah, usually we would have a study session on this where we could ask a lot of questions.
Yeah, I agree.
Because I, I am looking at the, these very valid questions that have been brought forward, but not having the planner here to ask questions, though I appreciate Mr. Costco's time, I'm not sure I honestly feel comfortable making a decision on this at this point.
I completely agree.
With the information that I have.
Sure. For, for the sake of those who are present from the public, I would like to hear any comments from those who are here and then we can discuss amongst ourselves and whether to keep the, it open. But I would like to make sure those that have come today are heard. So if you are here today and you still have anything to say concerning this, we want to hear you. These comments are being recorded. And then the commissioners, in light of the fact that we don't have a staff member from the city to present and to be able to answer questions, we will talk amongst ourselves you and then we'll make a decision as to whether we'll keep it open and announce a different date to continue this conversation or whether, you know, the commissioners feel that, okay, there's enough here for us to make a decision tonight. But we haven't gone to that decision, that aspect yet. If you are here and you would like to say something, please. There being none, my comments to the commissioners is we should not close the public hearing for this. And, and because we cannot close the public hearing, I think then we should hold our, our comments to after we, we've closed the public hearing, which is the correct procedure. What does that mean? That means then we are unable to proceed and, and make any, and make any educated determination. My apologies to the applicant, but these things do happen. It's only fair that we continue this when we have the city present. And then the, the Planning Commission can continue to have a discussion and be able to address you and be able to ask you the questions which we would normally ask you and engage with you after we've closed the, the public hearing. But since we're not closing the public hearing, I would say that we would, we would do that on the day we can close the public hearing. So do I need a motion from, from my fellow commissioners?
This is Diana. Do we have to set a date at this time or can we just say we will set a date in the future?
We will, we will, we'll set a date in the future and, and announce and give the public adequate time and notification.
Okay.
I, I, I will need a motion for us to take the, the, for us to keep the public, the public hearing open and for us to postpone this meeting until we're able to, when the city can be present to present the, their findings in person.
This is Diana. I'll, I will motion to continue the public hearing and set a new date to continue this discussion.
A second?
So I, I, I do have a quick question. If we keep the public comments open, which the way I'm understanding this, the city staff is the person that's missing.
Yes.
All the people are present that were, that were wanting to make the comments. If we keep the comments open, can we have a study session and talk about this? Because my thoughts are, if the people are here that wanted to make the comments, I don't know why we couldn't close the comments now because they're here and they've made the comments. Because again, I'm not sure, I'm not sure, can we talk about this at our next study session with the public comments being open?
That's a good question. That's a procedural question.
Yeah, I, I have no problem closing the public comments because the, the people that wanted to make the comments are here now.
Yeah. Okay.
I, I think we need to leave them open, Commissioner, until more information's out there. I mean, as we study this and more information gets out to the public, there may be additional questions. So to, to close it currently without the final plan and all of our information, our study, I, I, I don't think that we can close that public comments.
Because procedurally, once we.
That's how, that's how it would have worked tonight. If the city staff would have been here, the people, the public would have made their comments and we would have closed the public comments and then we would have had our conversation.
Yes.
So the people, the people had their right to make the comments already.
Yeah.
There's no reason to keep the public comments open.
Yeah. Well, Commissioner, the people have already made all their comments. We, 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 we opened it and there were no additional comments from the people that were here and they have been recorded. I would strongly caution against closing the, the public comments, to be honest, for the reasons that you, for, for the, for, for the reasons that you are giving. Right? Which means if the public comments are still open, it gives the people a chance to still provide us with public comments whenever we meet. Whereas once we close the public comments at our next meeting, regardless of what else we've done in between, right, procedurally, we cannot re, we, I mean, to reopen them, then we would have to notify, we'd have to give the requisite amount of time notification to the public, at which case we won't be able to even do it that day. Because the.
I guess, I guess what I'm saying is we've never, we've never done that before. We've, anytime the public comments have been made like they have been tonight, because all public, the public had the opportunity to come here and make the comments. So they've, they've had their opportunity, they've made the comments, they've sent in, they've sent in their letters. We've never kept comments open for another meeting, never.
We, we did once and we ended up having a meeting on a Tuesday, when we postponed the meeting on Tuesday. We kept the public comment.
Yeah, that, that, that was different because the, the, the public was not aware of the situation. I mean, I, I, all I'm, the only reason I'm saying this is I'm not sure that we can talk about this now at our next study session if the public comments are, are open. I'm not sure about that.
And I think that it's the unknown right now that, that the biggest concern is, is because we don't have clear direction on what to do. But yet we do know that if we do close the comments, we can't open them back up.
Open them back up. So, so which one of the two do we want to go with? You know, because what I'm hearing you say is the public have the right to make their comments and that's why I'm saying to preserve that right, let's not close the comments. And.
And Diana has, has motioned, we've had a second on the end. Is there any?
Yeah.
Any further discussion?
I think that Mr. Crowley's point is, is right, which is I'm not sure we can discuss this in study session. And honestly, I'm not sure why this wasn't presented to us in study session originally for us to at least start asking those questions so we would be more prepared for this evening. But I, I mean, if we do close the comments, then I believe the last time this happened most recently was it's up to the city if they want to allow public comments when it goes to the city commission.
No, if we are, if we are, if we are recommending.
Correct.
It'll, it would be a recommendation from us.
Right. But that, that'll be the only other time the public will have the opportunity to make comment if it gets to that stage.
I guess I'm, I guess can someone explain? I'm, I'm confused. If the public has had their opportunity tonight, can someone explain to me why the public comments still needs to stay open? Because the public had their opportunity tonight. They hadn't been shortened in time, that nothing was postponed, they had their opportunity. So I'm, I'm, I guess someone needs to explain to me why it still needs to stay.
Do you feel, do you, does, I guess my question is, given the fact that we don't have somebody from the city, right, to address any questions? Because there are questions that have not been, that have not, and we have not, we have not questioned the applicant. We have not engaged with the applicant because there are valid questions that have been brought up and we can only do that if we close the public comments. If it is the wish of the commissioners to close the public comments so that we can engage and so that we can ask some of the questions and let him respond to some of the issues that have been brought forward from the written public comments, we can do that. But I'm also hearing you say that we don't feel adequately prepped because we don't have our city person here. So which one is it?
No, it, I, I guess, I guess I'm not understanding what you're saying the procedure here is because when we close the public comment, yes, we can still have the conversation and we can talk about it, but we still need to have the staff explain to us what their thoughts are.
Yeah.
So that, that still needs to happen. But the city, but, but the city never answers the questions for, for, that the public, about the public comments.
Yeah.
The public just comes in and makes their comments. We don't answer their questions at that time. So it's not a question and answer session. It's they make their comments, we listen, we listen to the staff.
But the city, but the city makes a presentation.
Um, this is Diana.
In front of the public.
Did the city, I have not been to too many of these. Has, in the past, did the city make the presentation then the public comments were opened?
Yes.
So we basically skipped that entire step before opening the public.
Because, because the city was not here.
Right. So are, if, if we close the public comments, can the city still make their presentation and can we still ask Mr. Costco questions?
We can do that. However, what about the public who, some questions might have arisen from the public during the presentation by the city, when the city was making its presentation?
I, okay. I'm following you now. That makes a lot more sense to me.
Yeah.
That's, that's what I, that's why I was wondering what the reasoning, I get what you're saying though.
Do you feel better about that?
So, so it's, it's, we, we do have to be fair, I think, to the public. They need to hear what the city's saying and, and because some new questions might arise from the public concerning what they're hearing and they'll come forward and they'll, they'll address us.
Yeah. I, I get what you're saying.
Yeah.
Yep.
So.
So do we still go with the recommendation?
And so, so there was a motion and then there was a second. And at this point, I will, I will ask, since there's no more discussion on this, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign? Well, there it is. So we have not closed the, the public comments and then we will set a date where we will continue this and the city will provide someone to come and make a presentation. And if you hear anything while this being made and any questions arise, you are free to address us as long as the public comments have not been opened. After we close the public comment, we will then discuss amongst ourselves as commissioners or engage or ask questions for clarification from the applicant. I, I think that's fair. So having said that, you know, we will, we'll move on.
I would recommend that if, I would recommend that if you're here and you've made public comment, if you have not signed the sheet and back, please sign the sheet so they know to communicate with you whenever it's rescheduled.
Okay. So moving on with our agenda, any, all business?
I believe there was the question and I think that the planner, the planner may be able to address it at a later date as well. There was the question about the park and the reservation of land in, in lieu of, and I think that that would go along with this repla, I mean, this plating as well. So.
Even though we've been given a written opinion, I think you were suggesting we wait until the city.
Right. That way if we have questions beyond what's written here.
Okay. And under new business, there was a, there was the whole issue of expertise communication. We sought a clarification and turns out it's a lot simpler. The definition of expertise communication is a lot simpler than what we previously thought. Hope, hope you've all read it. And basically the legal has defined it as a communication, whether written, spoken or otherwise by a commissioner with someone who does not serve on the commission regarding a matter before the. with someone who does not serve on the commission regarding a matter before the commission. Uh, so it, that does not prohibit, you know, commissioners, you know, uh, making a comment or, or speaking amongst ourselves or even discussing whether we'll be able to make it to a meeting or not, or not make it to a meeting, uh, based on this definition. Uh, I think I remember I, I requested this. And, um, any comments on this, uh, before we move on?
I have none and I, I actually, I appreciate the fact that you asked for clarification. Um, it, it really helps to, um, know that just a simple email is not considered as being wrong.
Thank you. And then of course the public land, the public park land dedication, there is an op- there is an opinion and I think the consensus is, even though we can read it, but it'll be good for us to go through this, uh, when the city planner is here. Uh, is that kinda what I'm hearing from everybody?
Online, did you hear that Diana and?
Uh, I did not.
Oh, sorry. So on the, on the, um, the public park land dedication, if you remember, most of these are questions we asked. And we're gonna head and answer the questions, of course, we can read them. But, um, um, a suggestion by my fellow commissioner here is that, uh, why don't we wait until the city planner is here? Then we can kinda go through this, since these were questions and they went and did their, their research for us and we'll go through this with them.
Yes, I, that would be.
Well, that said, it's the announcement section, which means the next regularly scheduled Planning Commission study session will be Tuesday, March the thirty-first. And the next regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting will be Wednesday, April the thirteenth, at twenty, uh, at seven o'clock P M. And please note, we have yet to set a time for continuing the hearing for what was on the agenda today. And these dates that I've just given are not necessarily when that will occur, but the public would be given adequate time and notification of when that is. If there's no more business, I will.
I believe Ms. Carlson.
Dr. Wade, can you, can you reread, uh, please, the, uh, next study session? I believe you mentioned Tuesday, but it's actually on a Thursday.
Thursday. Sorry, the next regularly scheduled Planning Commission study session will be Thursday, March the thirty-first, uh, at noon, uh, he, not Tuesday, March the thirty-first. Well, that said, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second.